Record. Okay, I think that's everybody we're gonna have this morning for the TCTV Commission. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at seven forty eight AM. Okay, let's see, public comment. I don't see anybody. Okay, the minutes from our March meeting, which I sent out. Do we have, I need a motion in a second so we can talk about them.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay.
Oh, second bit.
Thank you. Any corrections or comments?
No.
Okay, then all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um. On the next item of business is the commission member, so Ed Gillespie did send his stuff in, which is great. And Vicky confirmed that she received it. I have not yet seen it on the LNA agenda, so, but the April agenda, which comes out at the end of the month, I haven't seen yet, so I'm hoping that his appointment will be on that agenda. And so then hopefully at our next, he'll be able to attend, so.
Right.
So that is. That is good news. Okay, let's see, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget status. Actually did update all the numbers, so let me share my screen. Can I do that? No.
Yeah, you have the ability to share.
Okay, let's see where, oh, there we go. Okay, so, um, just make this a little bit bigger. Okay, this is, all right, this is summary. So we've got our videographer column, our supervising producer, which is Laura and Matt slash Tyler. Office Support Program Support Public Relations Travel. So we're in, we're in really good shape. We are entering, we'll be entering concert season and spring sports, so I expect our videographer dollars will go up, but from a financial standpoint, we are in good shape. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, stop sharing that. Okay, uh, so back to the agenda. Uh, in terms of next year's budget. We, let's see, Board of Finance approved the budget at the first selectments level, which was, the only thing they changed was our capital requirement. We wanted four new field cameras, we got approval for two, but we already bought two, so we're in good shape. The Board of Finance did not change anything, and then, I don't know, a week ago or so, we had the 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 Town Council Finance Committee hearing, so they all seemed happy and I, I don't think they're gonna change our levels, but the Town Council vote is the beginning of May, so I think there'll be one more hearing. I haven't, Phil, is that right? Will we have to appear in front of the whole council?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
So I don't, I haven't gotten notification of that, but it, you know, it'll be certainly before the first week of May, so. Oh, Jens, you're in two places.
I know. I'm sorry. There we go.
Okay, so I expect we'll get, you know, exactly what we asked for, you know, and the the two cameras is fine, we're just trying to get in a rotation to replace the equipment. Okay, is Laura still there? There she is.
I'm still here.
Okay, so we're down to programming, so just because I'm trying to take notes while we're in the meeting, so I can get them out faster. Can we go in the order of the agenda, which would be general programming, so that would be not sports and not original program productions?
General programming, we're still, you know, again, we're just still plugging along with the regular government meetings, a lot more have stayed on Zoom than, you know, so it's still a mix of Zoom meetings and regular meetings, but those are going well. The new Board of Ed Tricaster is working really well, the audio is great. They actually hosted the Town Council hearing last night, the budget hearing. So I will be getting that today to edit and hopefully get up tonight. And, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much, we're pretty much going, you know, moving along.
And the streaming is working, is working well?
I'm sorry?
The streaming is working well.
So far, so good. I mean, Board of Ed is streaming on both Facebook and YouTube. I have not checked any stats yet, but it's only been two meetings. So.
So I have a quick question. There's been some comments on Facebook about the fact that we don't stream from Town Council or from, from Council Chambers.
Yes, that's the new video, we have to buy that new system, so.
That's under technology, Jens.
I'm sorry?
And then that comes up under technology.
Oh, sorry.
About that in a minute, yeah.
That's all right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda in front of me. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, Trumbull High Sports.
Trumbull High Sports is rolling along. We've been covering a lot of them. The student videographers have really taken to them, and they're doing a great job. So we had.
Them, right?
I'm sorry?
We have three of them?
We have three of them. Two of them have been very active. One I know was, is gonna be more active once the concert season picks up. I know she's got a lot of other activities. So there's two videographers who have been primarily doing the sports, which is great, and they're doing a fantastic job. We've got a system going as far as like dropping off equipment. The athletic director has been really helpful in terms of letting us, you know, use their office in terms of just, can I leave a camera here? Can they put it there after the game? So that's made, that's made our job, my job, a lot easier, and the kids' jobs too, because, you know, they don't always drive, they don't always have, you know, the ability to bring the camera into school the next day, so it just makes everything work more smoothly, so big tip of the hat to Mike King and his staff. Yeah, so sports has been going well. We're gonna livestream the Powderpuff Game next Saturday. And that's, that's pretty much it for sports. There hasn't really been a ton of adult education stuff that we can record. I, I think it's still just slowly picking up with, you know, post pandemic, but we're gonna be moving, as you said, into concert season, so we've got a lot of concerts to record, and then we've got graduation, so that'll be here before we know it. And it'll be especially busy. I saw Mr. Manuel on Tuesday, he's gonna give me the end of year schedule for like all the sports and award ceremonies, and then we're gonna go through. We're gonna have a Zoom meeting once I get the graduation camera, the crew together, so we can walk through that.
I saw him at the grocery store. He's just, he's just such a great guy to work.
He said that, he said he saw you at the grocery store, yeah.
I'm like, damn, you do all this stuff and you do the family grocery shopping.
Right, right.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, he's a good guy, so he, yeah, we're gonna, we'll be in touch about the end of year stuff, so we'll be covering those things as per usual. And the, he said that the audio team is gonna be the same that they hired last year, so that's good.
Okay, and original productions, anything else in the works?
Um, well, we were, I was supposed to meet with the Health Department today, but unfortunately jury duty calls. But we're going, we are putting together some PSAs for them for the regional health department. We were just down in Stratford on Monday doing some onsite recording. So we're gonna do, you know, little bits and pieces, like a day in the life of a public health nurse. So we're getting those together. And I've still been, you know, I've been reaching out to people trying to put things together, and once graduation's over, then I can think a little more about other things that are not graduation. So hopefully we can get some more local things going.
It sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, here we go, technical, the Board of Ed Video, okay, we have that.
Yeah, and tip of the hat to Michelle, she's doing a great job recording and getting everything, you know, she's getting the hang of that, so that's great. Because she'll be a good resource, you know, as long as we use something similar in Town Hall.
And that's our next that's our next agenda item.
Yes.
So Bill, you wanna?
Uh, yes, so I've submitted the RFP for the Town Hall Council Chambers Video Distribution System, so hopefully that'll be out. Kevin says he's trying to get that out this week, so hopefully we'll get that.
What's it called? RS, RFQ or?
Uh, RFP, RFQ, the bid proposal.
Yeah.
So that'll be out hopefully in a couple days. Once that happens, I think it's six weeks, and then vendors have the opportunity to submit their proposals and a sealed bid, and then we'll review them, so we're, we're moving along on that front.
So we're still hoping that we can make something happen this summer?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as we get the bid released and then reviewed and and all that, we'll place the order, and then obviously we have to wait for any equipment to come in, but hopefully that delay won't be too long, so. Moving as quickly as we can.
And I apologize for, for being out of the loop, but are we not, are we not streaming from Council Chambers at the moment?
We are currently not streaming from.
For a while.
No, we still, Jens, we still have the old system that's too old to support, you know, browsers that will allow us to stream.
Okay, but I thought we, we, we still got along, we, we still, we still were able to use it with that old.
So the workaround that we tried worked once or twice, and then we had problems.
Okay.
Facebook does not make it very easy for us to stream. That was one of the, that was the primary issue. Is that it was.
Yeah. That's, that's all right. I just wanted for clarification, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, on the equipment front, so we got some new cameras, right, was that, I have that in last month's notes. Let's see. We replaced two field cameras, okay, and moved the old ones to the studio, so there's no additional update?
No.
Okay, so I'm actually gonna take.
No, I mean, the only other thing I may request is, you know, to put in for some more, some cables, but that's just, that's nominal expense.
Well, we have money in the budget, so remember, we're in the last quarter of the fiscal year, so whatever else.
Yeah, it'll be done before graduation, because that's what it would be to support.
Okay. And then we, we're gonna talk about the backup storage cloud solution, I think at this meeting was our.
Yes. Yes, because one of our hard, external hard drives failed.
Right, so we talked about how big of an archive do we want to keep? We have approximately twenty terabytes of data now. And Glacier is ninety-nine cents per terabyte a month, and we were gonna discuss at this meeting whether that was the direction we were gonna go in, is what my notes showed. Is that, is that still sound true?
Yeah, right. And then basically, the big question is how much, you know, what do we want to keep in archives and for how long? You know, do we want to keep programming from twenty thirteen? Do, I mean, I think we should keep the government meetings, but I, but I don't know how long.
Well, I think, I mean, sorry, Kate, the, so the cost of storing this stuff is really insignificant, so.
Over time, it grows. That's the issue, because, you know.
I know, but, but let's say you spend, so if you have ten terabytes, you spend hundred and twenty bucks a year. So maybe, I mean, does the historical society have anything they want to do with it, or how? It, I know that in hun- hundreds, a hundred years from now, people will really enjoy watching this stuff. Right?
So let's, so maybe we, what we can do is, because like, I don't have, like, twenty terabytes would be twenty dollars a month. But what I don't have any sense of is, okay, how much is a year's worth of our typical government programming, like?
Yeah, I apologize, I do have that, I just don't have it on hand.
All right.
But I'll get that, I'll get that to both of you.
Yeah, Jens could have an off meeting conversation, so we can bring some of that information back to the council, because I think that's part of what we need to understand is what, how, how will this, how much will, how fast will this grow over time, so that we can budget appropriately? I mean, my. Everything. Yeah.
Okay, do we, do we have anything in our policies as far as how long we're supposed to keep these working now?
No, because we're not the public record, right, so.
Yeah, okay.
Minutes are, so. But from the standpoint of you know.
Archival purposes and.
What Jens said too, I mean, but we need to have just some idea of how much are we talking about a year, so that
Exactly.
You understand?
And what things do we want to keep versus other things?
So can we do a Jens, Laura, Kate conversation between now and the next meeting, where we discuss this, we get the data, and we come back to the council with the, to the commission with a recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely. I have, like I said, I have spreadsheets of numbers that I've started. But yeah, I think this is definitely a conversation we need to have, because that'll help us, you know, that'll help guide the rest of the decisions.
Okay, so we're gonna come back with a recommendation and reporting data or whatever.
Yeah, estimates.
Okay. Okay, great, that would be good, because I this has been something we've been hanging on for a while, so we should probably just decide. Okay, next one is marketing, PR, social media, posting content and schedule. So from, at the last meeting, we said Laura and Amy had met, we have HootSuite, which allows us to schedule and push to social media, but they're increasing their cost to ninety-nine dollars a month. I think Amy said Buffer is the same kind of app, but free, and Laura was gonna test it and potentially switch. So did any, Laura, did any of that happen? Where'd you go?
Sorry, oh, are you there?
Yeah. No, now you're on mute again.
Okay, I'm in my car, sorry.
Okay. Did you hear what I said?
Yes, I've been using Buffer, that's a free app, and from what I've seen fully and pushed Twitter, and, and I've just been pushing the schedule on Wednesdays, except when we have other, you know, for live streaming from something, or if there's something else to, you know, that I think would be appropriate.
So you faded out for, you saved. For a second, so is Buffer successful? Can't hear you. You must be on Daniel's Farm Road. Not Daniel's Farm, White Plains.
Not always the best.
Okay, wait.
Can you repeat what you said?
I said, it sounds like you've been using Buffer, has it been successful? Good.
So far, yes, it has been successful.
Okay, so we're gonna continue to use it for the time being?
Absolutely. The price is right, and it's working.
Okay. All right, excellent. Okay, that's good. All right. Then the Todd, Amy, Todd Manuel, Amy connection, you were gonna try to get them connected. I don't know how hard that's gonna be between now and the end of the year.
Yeah, I know, I saw Todd on, as I said, I saw him Tuesday at a meeting, and he said that Amy did approach him at, I think it was like a, a school event, like, oh, I have to talk to you, and, but they haven't been able to connect yet.
Okay. All right, what else should we be talking about? I will, will tell you.
I was just gonna ask if anyone has any suggestions on original programming. I'm definitely open to them. I never, I started the Tashwinols, but then that never followed through, time just, you know, things happened. And time moved away. I mean, that's something I can still pursue if we think that that's worthwhile.
Yeah, I would look at what, I, I would look at what other associations are in town. There's a Canoe Brook Association. I don't know that they are as not one thing, we're very.
They don't have a clubhouse the way that Pinewood Lake does. I think it's more just a membership, but I can ask around. I have a friend who lives on the lake, so I can ask her.
And, and do you know, um, oh my God, I just forgot her name. They'll come to me.
After we hang up.
Marilyn Lord.
I don't know her. I know who she is, but I don't know her.
Well, I can connect her, to her, she's lived on the lake for forever, and, and it's, you know, I lived on the lake too, growing up, so I don't know that there's anything there, but Marilyn would probably know who to talk to, and you could have a quick conversation and find out, but I don't know. I'm just trying to think of other things, you know, maybe
Yeah.
Thing, like just talking about where all the pickleball courts are, and what a big.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, because that's a new, you know, and I know that that's a big hit in town.
Huge, I'm getting so much pressure to play. My run is around the corner.
It's a worldwide phenomenon. It's really sweeping the, sweeping the globe.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be, I'm sure it's gonna be a topic in the upcoming municipal elections. A hot topic.
Accessibility to courts, Jens.
Well, just, you know, Mark, someone will make a big stink out of the town spending money on pickle courts, and then you'll have the opposition saying we shouldn't spend any money.
Who will come out swinging?
I, I had something, I don't know if it's what we do with the Trumbull Community TV, but about ten years ago, I interviewed two World War II veterans. They're unfortunately no longer here, and that's partly why I interviewed them. So the Vietnam era, the Korean and the Vietnam era veterans are about to, you know, depart, just because they're, they're getting old.
Yeah.
And I
Yes.
I think it's, it's for the community, I mean, it's nothing to do with town government, I totally get that. But it would give us a lot of support in the community.
I, that's, Jens, it's a great idea. Actually, my father is on the VFW, is involved with them, and he's always asking me about recording stuff. He never gives me anything specific. Oh, we're doing this thing, are you? So I think I could reach out to them and see if any of their veterans would like to sit down and just talk about their experiences, because.
Yeah, and Ray Baldwin's a vet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I didn't.
Great idea. I love that.
I didn't have, uh, an agenda such, they both, one of these guys was in, in Germany, the other one was in the South Pacific, and I just asked them to to start from the beginning, and, and, you know, they showed me their medals, they showed, you know, just I was really moved by it, because they were just great guys, and, you know, so it's not town government.
But.
No, but it's still residents and. It's educational, and it's relevant to.
Very true, Laura, that, that totally covers it. Absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that could be a great series, just to.
I agree. I agree. I'll reach out, like I said, I'll, you know, again, I, I have contacts with the VFW, so I'll start with that and see, you know, if anyone is interested in sitting down and just talking about their experience and yeah, and if anybody has any ideas on, you know, questions or any specifics that I, you know, you want me to ask, any ways to, I don't know, tie it into Trumbull. Please, send those along.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to, back then, I spoke to George Arison, and he, he, he put me in touch with two veterans, and I just called them up and explained what I was doing, and they were very, their families especially were very you know, supportive about the idea.
I'm sure. And they're also, you know, that can also tie into the new facility as well.
Excellent point, yeah. Right.
Yeah, I love that idea. So Laura, if we need to talk about it some more.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, cool. Good idea. Anybody had any more?
I'm sorry?
Anybody have any more ideas? All right, so let's see. Go ahead.
No, I was just like spitballing out loud. I mean, I don't know if we want to do anything for the farmer's market, you know, I don't know that that would be anything particularly long.
Yeah, but it could just be a minute, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I mean, I could just go down with a camera and get some, you know, or whoever, and get some footage, and just put, almost like the, how we would do the Trumbull Day, you know, like an interstitial piece.
Yes.
I think testimonials are very important and very catching, you know, people, if you get somebody talking about what the benefits have been, oh, so there's the vendors and then there's the customers, but if you look at the vendor, for instance, maybe, I'm not, I haven't been to the market for years, but I assume that these vendors that keep coming back do it because they make that it makes sense financially for them, so.
Right.
It would be great, maybe something Rena could use in you know, promoting the town, something like that. It's, I think it would be great just to have people saying something, both the, the users and the the vendors, how great it is.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, if I'm not mistaken, it's not proprietary, but it's specific to the Nichols Improvement Association, but still, that's, you know, it still is a town.
Yeah, yeah.
And the beauty is, it doesn't matter how long it is, right? We can use it in between programming, it can be up on the website for.
Just posted on, on Face, just posted on Facebook completely.
Exactly, yeah.
And I'm sure. I'm sure they'd appreciate the visibility too.
No.
Absolutely, yeah. Because they've renovated, like Jens, they've changed up some of the parking, like I know that the baseball fields are a little, have been
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Cool.
And what about the new the new initiative over in the industrial park? There was on, I think it was on the front page of Trumbull Times this week or last week. The old, let me see, I have it here. Rebirth. Unilever. There, there's an article on the front page of Trumbull Time where that industrial park is being turned into something completely different, or inject life into a stagnant corporate, or if, if you I'm just reading it, but basically, there's some initiatives going on over there, people moving in to buildings that were previously occupied by Unilever and bringing business to town.
Can you send, can you like snap a picture of it, and either text it or email it to me?
I can, wait, I'll, I'll just.
Yeah, because I think it comes, it falls under the, you know, reuse.
Yeah.
So this is the one, and.
The one, that one, the one that's on the cover is they're like an industrial laundry company, right?
I, I got the, I got the impression, yes, it is, but there are many more.
Yeah.
You know, kind of different. And I don't know, Rena is doing a great job, and I, I don't know if we've ever.
So maybe touch base with Rena and see. Yeah, if, if we could have a series of, okay, redos or remakes or repurposed of, of you know, building, something else, yeah.
And it is a government issue, because Rena works for the town.
Yeah.
So.
And that falls under adult education as far as, you know.
Well, just things of town, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, you know, we don't want to get like on a side or some, of something, we just want to report what is happening, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, just to interject quickly, the the bid invitation was posted yesterday, it's on our website, so that'll be closing on May sixteenth.
May sixteen. Submitted RP, submitted on April nineteenth. Close, what was that date on? May?
May sixteenth at two PM.
All right.
Okay.
Deanna won the Board of Ed, didn't they?
And we're not. Yeah, we're not sure anybody else is gonna submit for this, so.
No, I hope, I hope they, they get this one too. It's, it's a great organization.
I would say they you know, again, they may be the only ones that did, so we'll see what happens.
Guys, I'm about to pull into a parking garage, so I may lose you. So if you need anything, please just shoot. So if you need anything, please just shoot me an email.
Okay, the only other thing I would say about that is that the, there, there may be some, you know, financial challenges on that system. So, but Bill and I are working together on, you know, if there's, if the bids come in higher than what's allocated, how we're going to cover the cost. So we're, we're confident we're going to be able to get it taken care of. Okay, anything, anything else? I, I think I'm all, I'm left down. I'm down to miscellaneous. Nothing?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so wow. Meetings are getting short. I'm gonna adjourn at 8:19 unless we have anything else. All right, our next meeting is June 1st. In the meantime, everybody enjoy the spring. I don't know about you, but my allergies are horrible. And only getting worse by the day, but I guess that's the price we pay for it getting warmer earlier. Thank you, global warming. Anybody have anything else?
No.
No. Great. Have a great day. Thanks for being here, everybody.
Yeah, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.